Call the meeting to order, ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following items. Item A, approve the minutes of the following: City Council Work Session October 15th, and City Council Regular Meeting October 15th. Item B, adopt Resolution R-24-40 to accept a donation for the Winston Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $500 to be dedicated toward the Winston Volunteer Fire Department's Capital Improvement Fund. Item C, approve the claims list for December 3 of 2024. Item D, declare items related to the G or the G1 grass rig as surplus equipment and eligible for sale or donation as recommended by the fire chief, and authorize the city administrator to determine the process and best method for sale or donation of the equipment. That's the consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before we jump into the public hearing tonight, we're gonna go right to the, uh, department report, uh, Chris, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, past six months for the Public Works, uh, couple highlights, we finished up with the streetlight project, we finally got all those done. Um, all the, all the flags, all the Christmas decorations fit good, except one of them, we had to do a little modification on, but they all look, they're all really nice, they look good. Um, we finished our portion of sidewalk removal that we had on Andy Avenue, um, got all the hydrants flushed for the, for the summer before fall. I've been working on boulevard tree removal, kind of the ash, ash borer, getting those done, starting on them. Been putting up the flag, flags, banners, I saw the decorations are up now. Um, we had a, um, airport inspection done in, was it, I think it was May? May or June, they came out and did an inspection and gave us a list of recommendations to do, and we have a majority of those done, waiting on a few things yet. Um, the new County Road 5 project is done, uh, we did, had a little bit involved in that. Uh, the new gate at, uh, sewer plant is up and it's functional. Been working with the Department of Health on water tests, that they come out and we got a couple tests that we do every year that, um, lead and copper and, um, PFAS that they test for. Uh, we did have, uh, well four went down, um, took a little while for them to get the parts and get that back up, but that's going. Uh, we got the water tests sent into the Department of Health and those came back good, so that well is, is up and running. Um, we received a grant for the new lawnmower for out at the airport. Uh, we took possession of that, probably two month ago, month and a half, two months. We'll have that, so that's one piece will be ready for, for next, next spring, we'll start mowing our own lawn out at the airport. Finished sweeping for the year, we swept right up until it, it was snowy and now it's froze. Couple of the major things we've been up to.
That's it?
Did you want to ask how the streets were working?
No, uh, I was gonna ask about, uh, the ash trees, you guys, you guys are taking down some of them yourselves?
Ourselves, no.
Oh.
We've, we've had them all hired out that we've done.
Do we, do we have a goal in mind of how many per year we're trying to knock out? Or just as they are?
Right, as of right now, I mean, we have to try to stockpile a little money for that.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully, when we get to that point where we really need it, that there's going to be some grants available to us, but, um, yeah, just preparing, I guess, and we're, so far we're in the planning stages, but not of, uh, it shouldn't be within even the next year that we really have to, to motor down, should be in the next five.
Is there talk of state aid because there's so many throughout the state or something?
Mm-hmm.
There has been some grants awarded too for removal on the ash trees, the other cities.
Right, we're just not there yet in our region or area as far as the, um, as far as the numbers of trees that have been hit.
You don't have much equipment for tree trimming or removing, you have chains?
We have chainsaws, a couple pole saws, a bucket or anything, we don't have the-
No bucket.
No bucket, no.
Is there a plan to, um, trim the weeds and shrubs behind the boulevard around the lakeside in the spring?
Yes, there is.
What is the plan?
The plan, I mean, we, um, our tree trimmer that we use, that we're sending out for bids, we put that on there.
Okay.
Then he trims it.
Okay. Yeah, would be nice to get it done in the spring so that you could enjoy the lake all summer.
Um, that job, just so you know, Tom, just, um, from this past year and talking with Zach who's done it, it's a, he does a difficult job, and I know Public Works used to do that and handle that on their own, but he doesn't, he's not real fond of doing it either, so, um, he said, I can see why they don't want to, it's, he says it's so steep that it definitely needs to be a professional.
What he plans on doing at the spring?
Yep. I wasn't excited about it, but yes, he plans on that as part of the whole package.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chris?
And the company that does the water fountain there onboard again next year?
Yes, yep, the fountain is put away, cleaned up, put away in our shop, so.
Okay.
They, uh, they contact us or me and then, or I do, in the spring and have it set up.
Make sure it's lit at night.
There was, there were, well, this year there were some lights that were burnt out and broke that they did fix, you know, so they'll come out in the spring and check it all again before they install it.
Okay. I'll put you in charge.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, we've come to the public hearing tonight, and, uh, first thing we'll do is, um, make a motion to open the public hearing.
A motion to open the public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Well, first thing we're gonna do is go through the truth and taxation hearing. Neil's gonna go through the slide presentation, then you people, if you have something you wanna ask, just step up to the microphone. Well, that makes it easier.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so as Mr. Mayor said, it's a truth and taxation public hearing, I'm going to go through a little bit of the process and how we got here and, uh, what we ended up at for our final numbers. So, we went and, uh, city staff met, and you'll go through, I'll go through this timeline coming up, but what you're going to hear in this is the recommended 2025 budget process, um, the recommended expenditures and the revenues, uh, what our general and debt service is going to be, and what the property tax levy and levy analysis looks like, and that led us to here today for the hearing. So, budget process, in July and August, we start to prepare as a staff of the proposed 2025 budget, we get information from all of the apartment heads, and, um, really just analyze where we're at as a city and, and where we're looking to be, and we look at, uh, August 20th, we had a work session to review recommended 2025 general fund budget and preliminary general fund with the debt service property tax levy. The 17th of September, we certified the preliminary levy, um, near 12% at that time, and I'm happy to say we did get it down from there. October 22nd to 25th, City Council Budget Hearings to review the recommended 2025 budget, which in this case, we added the airport funds, they, these are what are called our enterprise funds, airport funds, uh, fire funds, sewer fund and water fund are all enterprise funds, and we talked through the capital, which is mostly our equipment, and then general funds is how we run the city. December 3rd, we had the City Council is conducting currently, you're living in it, truth and taxation public hearing, and then on the 17th, that meeting, we will certify the recommended numbers.
Neil?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important that the public understand that the preliminary tax statements they received had our original 12% levy on it.
Correct.
And when we finished, we're around six now, 6%?
We'll be at 5.72.
Right, so what they see on their taxes, as far as the city's there, will go down?
Yes, yep. From where, and that's, that's like that every year, right? Um, as far as, when you set the preliminary levy, the city sets it at a, a rate that doesn't constrict so much as if something were to come up or there's some other project, knowing that the idea is that it will go, typically go down for the final levy. So, the five-year budget model that we've been operating under allows City Council to understand both general conditions of the city's budget, but also examining the impact of particular decisions on the financial position of the city, so basically taking into account all of our decisions that are looking to the future, and, um, there's a variety of assumptions, and you can see what those are here, but just expecting a 5% increase in the fire department per unit fee and 5% general property tax, um, levy just for the general side of things, and then 1% materials and supplies, 5% employee wages, and 9% of benefits. Looking here, the one thing that I did want to, um, bring up, you can see there's, there's a few things that have changed quite a bit, so last year, um, because of the way things shook out in the capital improvement fund, we spent 1.278 million, um, that was by purchasing, you know, a couple of police cars, we have the grass rig that you saw, some of those pieces that were in for that expenditures, or for those expenditures, um, that were saved up for, but still made it, made us spend more. This upcoming year, we don't have as many capital equipment needs at that, um, immediate capital equipment needs, so you can see that number is quite a bit lower, um, which will make this bottom number, the 5,329,000, uh, quite a bit lower. Now, that being said, in the water fund, we are spending quite a bit more, uh, when they redo County Road 1, which will be sometime this summer, uh, we're going to put some new gate valves and, and upgrade that equipment because that's the time, so we don't have to rip up the street again, and then, of course, we have well number five that'll be coming onboard here, and sometime next fall likely, and we'll have a large payment that goes with that. So, we will see an increase in water as far as rates go. I think we'll hit everything else coming up here later, so I'm not gonna go too deep into there. So, general fund budget assumptions and considerations, remember I spoke of the general fund as kind of just how we operate, it's our operating fund, so we have conservative and conservative revenue and expenditure assumptions, um, we implemented the 2025 compensation plan into this, we have a cost increase of employee benefits are in here, reallocation of current resources based on need and actual history, adjusted to better reflect actual expenditures, adjustments to, um, some of our external revenues. I think whenever you're preparing a budget, whether it be for your house or for the city or for a business, you're going to probably overestimate what your costs are and underestimate what your revenues are, at least we're hoping to do that, so hopefully at the end of the year, we're able to reflect a little bit more money than we spend. This supports a current complement of our full-time employees, plus adding three new officers, and then a part-time Public Works employee that will help us out with the lawnmowing. Continuing on with this, we're going to re-implement the multi-year funding strategy to support the street capital improvement program as adopted in 2017 budget. Um, you'll see, one of the items in here is that we are going to have some preparation in regards to the 2027 street improvement projects, which come at a, um, fairly high price tag, and that's part of the reason that things are, you know, that we're halting some of those capital equipment purchases. There's, uh, additional park CIP funding in order to, um, make our Hanlon Park dreams come true and, and really, um, dressing up some of our other parks. There's the EDA funding is, uh, continuing and looking to see what projects that we can have with them, hopefully related to bringing in, um, some housing to, to spur some more economic development, and then things that doesn't include are some of the tax abatements that we have, um, that we've already agreed to as far as bringing in businesses with that. All right, so these are the increases that were over a thousand dollars, uh, the wages and salaries, which we have spoken about before, but, um, these haven't been for the mayor and city council members, haven't been done for, I think it was at least 20 years from what I've been told, and, um, so you'll see just a small adjustment there. The auditing services, that's not even the entire amount that they went up to, but the total cost is $41,000 for our audit, which we really don't have a, a lot of options on, so, um, you'll see that that number went up quite a bit. The CIP transfer, that is putting more money towards the parks, the streets, um, some of those equipment things, we have that $35,000 there, and then Public Works has a lot of these things that are going to be related to us actually taking over our own mowing. A lot of those items are, are there, and you'll see the thousand dollars extra in the tree maintenance fund there, just in case another one does go down. And then, one of the things, we hadn't, um, budgeted, and that was my fault, but we just missed out on some of the park board meeting. All right, so the way that our revenues, um, come in, it's going to be 62% come directly from the residents with the property tax, and then we have our LGA funding from the state, and that's about 30%, and then we have different fees, fines, permits, building fees, things like that, that, that will add up to about 5% of our revenues, and then other miscellaneous, um, items that might come in for, you know, things like the public safety, things like that, that, that are, we don't like to count on necessarily, but we do, we do think that they're going to happen, so we do have them in there. And here, just our, our numbers for the revenues, so we expect to have about a $190,000 increase in our general government revenues and, um, staying flat for the rest of those. Now, the public safety, you can see that that went to zero, as you know, we are merging, um, departments with Lester Prairie, so that number's all going to look different and actually might not even end up being on there in the future as far as where those revenues go, because it'll be its own separate fund. It will be outside of the general fund. You know, it'll be treated a lot like our, uh, fire department is, is separate funding. Questions there? Good. So, um, you can see the bulk of our, well, I suppose a quarter, we, we're kind of in a lot of quarters, and then that last quarter split up in a lot of different areas, but, uh, Public Works and a lot of things go into Public Works, besides, it's streets, maintenance, it's, um, different Christmas decorations, things like that are in, inside of that, um, inside of that number there for the 22%, general government is, um, basically us running, running the city, and then you have the public safety taking up the other portion, or the largest portion. Uh, here you can see some of our expenditures, most have stayed relatively flat. The parks one here that you have the negative 28%, again, that's operating the parks, really that's us bringing in and taking over our own mowing, that piece of it, but offset by that increase in Public Works, because that's where that, that cost differential comes in, um, so you're looking at, you know, roughly $60,000 more than over last year for expenditures, and this is general fund projections at a 5% growth, um, if we could, if we can stick with that, that's where we'd be looking and going in the right direction where we get that orange line a little bit higher over the blue line there, giving us a little bit of, as we said, that, that cushion. Hopefully building back up our funds in order to have at least three quarters to a year of being able to pay our bills. So, recommended property tax levy, as we talked about earlier, per state law, city council must certify a preliminary property tax levy on or before September 30th of each year, that is done by the 30th, so we can get those preliminary tax statements out, or the county can get those preliminary tax statements out to the residents, um, and then they can see their values and, and try to prepare themselves. Uh, the final property tax levy may be lower, but it cannot exceed that, so the city's property tax levy is comprised of two parts, general levy and debt levy, and then that'll equal your property tax levy. The general levy is what we have control over now, the debt levy is basically our bonds that we owe, that we don't have a lot to, um, a lot of wiggle room without renegotiating those loans, refinancing those. Uh, this is approximately what, who pays what in our city, so residential homesteads pay about half, uh, commercial pays the other, another 36, and then you have some non-residential and a little bit of egg. Here are those bonds that I was talking about, you can see we do have some dropping off here in 2028, so 2027 will be our last year paying some of those, we have one that's dropping off in the water fund, um, I don't know if that one's up here or not, but that should be dropping off next year. Oops. Uh, and so additional debt issued for water and sewer improvement projects, and then that debt issued is financed, uh, by other city funds, again, those are the enterprise funds that are supposed to support themselves. So, recommended tax levy for our preliminary, um, 2025 debt service levy would decrease by 2.9%, I shouldn't say preliminary anymore, but for 2025, the general property tax levy would increase eight and a half percent, which would result in a 2025 property tax levy increase of approximately 5.72%. Um, here's some of the, the history of and some that, you know, predictions maybe moving forward, um, these things aren't necessarily, I wouldn't do a lot in the future, but obviously the ones that were in the past here, so if you look in 2023, we had 9.86% increase, and in 2024, 7.85%, so we ended up at that, um, 5.72, which is, you know, at least a little bit less than what we have done here in the past, and then these are all those bonds that should be dropping off in 2028, and that's what's allowing us to go and do that street project that, um, it's, it's nice that these are leaving, but we'll be replacing them with other pieces. Questions?
Yeah, could you go back to the slide that showed the increase, also and explain why it's 11%, I like, that kind of jumped out.
Um, well, really, it's because you're going up for $5,000 on a $20,000 budget.
It's not, hmm, not necessarily paying.
Oh, you want me to go through what it actually is, yeah, so it's not, it's, um, a per meeting fee increase, I guess, uh, everybody that is on our commissions currently is getting $25 per meeting, and, I'm sorry, $40 per meeting, the council was getting $25 to attend those same meetings, and we just made it so those are even, so that's why that number went up to that, so now, now everybody who attends those meetings outside of paid employee like myself will get, uh, $40.
Council have any questions before I turn it over to the?
Well, I'm not quite done yet.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Thank you. So, going through the property tax levy, we have $1,549,910 for the general levy, plus the $445,500 for the debt levy, bringing our total property tax levy to $1,995,410. This one might, may be hard to see, um, looking at where your tax capacity is, we're, and really what that's saying is that we can tax at a 100% rate, right, and we're taxing at 65.88%, the median value, home, um, or 2024 was the, oh, I didn't update this one, um, 279,000, that went down just a little bit for this year, so you'd be looking at an increase of $195 per year or 1625 per month, and we'll get to the bigger one here in a second, that gives you kind of a, um, I would say a more fair picture. Um, the recommended 2025 property tax levy responds to cost pressures, but it also continues a strategy established in 2012 to reduce the amount of bonding costs, again, that's where we are putting that money away in those, uh, CIP funds, so we don't have to borrow as much money. It improves the funding rate for the 2017 street CIP funding strategy, improves the funding rate for the park CIP funding strategy, supports certain recommendations of the fire department, satisfies the goals of economic development, funding through general tax levy dollars, and then reflects the difficult economic climate and inflationary factors. Now, this one is a little bit more, um, accurate of what a, a resident would see, so when you're looking here from, you'd have an increase in, um, that, that median home value that we talked about, about that 275, 279,000, to an increase of $123.61. The water rates are going up significantly, so, um, to cover those costs of that, the well and the other infrastructure that we're putting in, that, that will be something that we're going to need to, um, make sure is communicated accurately to residents, and sewer minimums, then you're looking at the per-unit fire department fee of $9 for the year, so in the end, across all of our funds and activities, the recommended 2025 budget results in a total cost increase of about $315 for home, which is a monthly increase of $26.25. So what's next, this meeting's your opportunity to address the 2025 budget and tax levy concerns with City Council, City Council will consider this testimony and adopt a final 2025 budget and tax levy at their next meeting on December 17th. Property owners can challenge their assessed values in the spring during the local, annual local Board of Appeals meeting, that meeting is not here, that meeting is with the county, and we use the county assessors to assess property, well, everybody in the county does know. Almost there, Steve?
You ready? Okay.
Now you can go.
Um, have you had any contact from anybody, any public?
I have not.
If you guys wanna step up and ask questions, now's the time, just state your name and address for the record and ask away.
Mayor, Councils, Councilman, uh, Mark Bilstrum, Beth Bilstrum, 430 Lake Court, Winston. Um, appreciate you, sir, clarifying right off the bat that the tax statement document that we received is, that the numbers are different, um, frankly, the presentation you just did was very helpful, answered some, some of our questions, but I just had some, some general ones related, um, so the document I have, understanding its change, was it showed a property levy increase of 12.9%?
Correct.
Okay, and you, and to make sure I'm comparing apples to apples, you're saying that's now at 5.72?
Correct.
Okay. I did have some questions on the expenditures, but again-
I did have some questions on the expenditures, but again, your summary explained kind of the ups and downs and changes. I guess one question related to the police officer increase, you said three new officers, which we fully support. This is not a negative comment.
Sure.
Um, I'm just wondering if that's going to be involved, the sharing with the city of Lester Prairie, are they two taking on cost for that somehow?
Correct, yep. So actually, that reduced our our cost overall. Even though we increased three full-time employees, we are acting as the stewards of the police department now. So it it is taking on their three officers, but they are paying that portion, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So really not, it's not like we're adding, we are adding three, but it's not, that cost isn't added directly to the Winstead residents.
One of the things that sharing or joining police departments and adding officers does is for Winstead and Lester Prairie, there'll be an officer on duty in his car 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So in the past, an officer would work his shift, go home, and he was on call. So if there was a call, then he'd have to get ready, jump in his car and go. Now, um, someone will be actually working. Okay. Very good.
So yeah, in the end, the merger has, besides having better coverage, it reduced our cost a little bit.
Thank you. Um, then the one other question is, and again, I'm using numbers that I had, so they're old, but I assume the relation, the ratios are about the same. In our particular case, while the the levy was proposed at 12.9, we ourselves are seeing an increase of about 15.4. And so assuming that relationship is close, instead of 5.72, we're probably going to see six and change. And I'm just wondering, is there a simple formula or a not simple formula that says why, why we're going to pay more and someone else is probably paying less to to achieve that average?
So you're using, besides your property value itself of why somebody would pay more and why somebody would pay less?
Right.
That's gonna be the main reason, so, and it might be, it could be your property value, but you have to remember what the county, what's on there. They they didn't change theirs. I mean, I think theirs was dead on, so theirs will stay the exact same.
There's, well, on this document showed that they were actually decreasing by 3.7%.
Okay, and that'll probably stay. I think that is staying the same, so I don't think that they changed theirs, and then your other piece will be the school.
As far as your home, the county sets the market value. All right, and so we have to go with what they what they set. So for example, if on a normal year, the county usually raises market values of all the homes. And if we would have, excuse me, a 0% increase, levy increase, it would still go up because your market value went up. Okay.
So what'll happen is, let's just say your neighbor, your house is worth, I have no idea, right? Let's just say your house is worth $400,000. And they say this year it's worth 420. They might say that your neighbor's is $400,000, but it's only now, this year, it's only worth 390. So that's where that percentage changes from home to home.
And when you combine all the, all the properties and instead it comes up at the 5.72 average?
Yeah, well, that, really, that's the number that we're asking for is that 5.72 average, yep, yep. So we get a, that dollar amount they put out there, that's what we're levying for, so the close to $2 million. That's what's spread out amongst everybody, including the businesses in town.
Gotcha. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Any questions on the council on this?
No, thank you, Neil, it was a good job.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Uh, we've come to the open forum section of the meeting. Anybody who wants to come up and talk to the council again, they're welcome. Except for you.
Mayor, council. Um, just want to remind folks of the winter parking ban that is in effect, all city streets, 2 AM to 6 AM. Uh, we just asked that you contact the police department, 320-485-2600, if you need to park on the street. It generally is not an issue, even if it's snowing, we just ask that you contact us and we'll work with you. You know, like I said, sometimes we have snow during Christmas and then people park on the street. We just ask then at that time, move your vehicles when the plows are coming through, and we all make it work. It works out, but I just wanted to remind folks, because now we're at that time where once it snows, the citations are issued. We try to remain consistent and treat everyone the same.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The administrator update and announcements?
Uh, the only thing I have is the Winstead Winter Festival is put on this weekend by the neighbors, so lots of fun events and coming out on Saturday, parade Saturday night.
Tom, do you have anything?
I do not.
Yep.
Nope.
Jesse? Kim?
No, sir.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, meeting adjourned.